Good evening and welcome to the September 27th Dublin City Council meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order and ask that our Clerk Jenny Delgado please call the roll.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Here.
Vice Mayor De Rosa?
Here.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Keeler?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Punio to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if you would, please. Okay, we have a couple of presentations this evening. The first is going to be Reeds Across America and Mr. Don Punio is here with us and he is going to share some thoughts about this event this year and some exciting news, I think.
Thank you, Mayor Amrose Grooms, Vice Mayor De Rosa, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here again. Every year we like to come before you and just give you an update of where we're at with the Reeds Across America program. It's a program that is in every state in the Union. We've got in cemeteries overseas where we honor the men and women that have served our country. Last year, over two and a half million reeds were placed on graves of veterans to honor them for the service that they gave us. Grand Leprechauns have been doing this. This is our fourth year now that we're doing Dublin Cemeteries. Every year we try to improve upon this. Typically, we will come to you in late October, early November. We asked if we could come earlier this year. We're hoping that we can get you, you can get us, I'm sorry, if you can get us on your calendar for Saturday morning, December 18th at 10:00. We have a ceremony that lasts a little under an hour. It's a moving ceremony. Every year we try to improve upon that and people really enjoy it and this event is growing in stature every year and it's just a great opportunity to come out and celebrate the people that have served our country. Earlier this year, a gentleman approached me and he said, "I started with Reeds Across America in 2007 at Green Lawn Cemetery where we had over 640 reeds." And he said, "I'd like to help out in Dublin. I wanted to help you out. What can I do to help?" And I said, "I want publicity." I said, "I can get the sponsors. We'll get the sponsors. We'll get the people to come out and work the cemetery and get the event together. I want, I want to put this on the map." And he said, "I can get some publicity for you." And a lot of times when people promise you things, you hope for the best and you just wonder how they're going to deliver. Well, this gentleman has delivered and exceeded my highest expectations. So with that, I would like to take just a moment here and introduce Mike Schittinger to talk about his involvement.
Thank you, Don. Good evening, everybody. Like Don said, I had the pleasure of bringing Reeds Across America to Columbus in central Ohio for the first time about 15 years ago. And I've just always had a passion for veterans. I am not a veteran. I'm a Boy Scout, which is as close as I can get with Greg Peterson from when we were little, but never served in the military. And I have done lots of fundraising and volunteer work for lots of different charities, but none of them gets the response that Something for Veterans does. That's just my own experience with numerous things I've done. And so when I call and ask for money or when I call and ask for, you know, any kind of support, they're just always like, "How can I help?" And I said to Don, "I do the same thing." And one of the things that I have a lot of connections in is our local media. And Don said, "Please help us." So I've already been in touch with all three TV stations, our cable station and our newspaper, and all of them have said, "We want to come." I did it for Honor Flight. They all covered our first flight a couple of weeks ago. And assuming nothing happens on a Sunday morning or Saturday morning, we should have lots of great coverage for Dublin Cemetery and Reeds Across America. Like Don said, we're going to do this Saturday, December 18th at 10:00 a.m. I heard him say an hour-long program. I hope we don't have an hour-long program. We have to talk about that. What's that?
Under an hour.
Under an hour, yeah. But we already have, the city and others have agreed to help us have a media tent to welcome our media, be able to do interviews and stuff. In addition, what we're doing has been so well-received so far that Governor DeWine has already said he's going to have a State House ceremony on the Monday before December 18th. So that would be December 11th or 12th or whatever day that is. And so we would love to have the city of Dublin's help and support, any publicity that you can offer with your resources and your attendance as well. So thank you for all you've done for our veterans and know how much we appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, well, thanks so much.
Thank you, Mike. You are a welcome addition and we just are so grateful. The three major TV stations have agreed to come out there. I've talked to Lori Gishel and we're going to have a media tent set up. We're going to change the format a little bit this year. We try to get it better every year and people come and we have a very nice ceremony, but they want to lay a wreath. And in the past, Grand Leprechauns had laid them before we had the ceremony. This year, we're going to have the ceremony and then we will be distributing the reeds to everyone in attendance so that they can place a wreath. At that time, we'll be reading the names of all the veterans and all of Dublin Cemeteries that are interred there. We welcome the participation of Amazon Web Services who is going to provide 25 to 30 employees to help us with that distribution of reeds. So it's going to be a nice event. We certainly could never undertake this or do what we do without the help of the city of Dublin. That begins with City Manager Dana McDaniel. John Reiner, Councilman Reiner, has been in part of our program for every year and that goes back to 2013 when VFW first attempted this. I can just go down the list if I can. I would like to name just two people. Vince Manicelli. I've worked with Vince on parades, frog jumps, and when we were out in a sleet in the snow two years ago putting tents up, the man's fantastic. And I would certainly be remiss if I did not recognize Lori Gishel because anything I've asked for, I've gotten it done. She's done it immediately and she's been such a blessing. And so it would be wrong if I did not recognize all the help that we've received from the city in making this event what it is. We want to see a crowd there and we want to invite you to come and join us because it's a moving ceremony and we would welcome your participation. Any questions for Mike or myself?
I don't think so, but Don and Mike, thank you so much for undertaking this and making sure that our veterans are celebrated in this manner. It's certainly special to this community. So thanks for all that you do and we will look forward to seeing you on December 18th at 10:00 in the morning.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may real quick, I just want to validate that the city will provide the same support as it has the last few years relative to some setup and takedown and a vehicle to pick up reeds later in the dead of winter when no one else wants to and then haul those to one of our dumpsters for disposals. Just sort of make sure you guys are okay with that.
That's great. I think we have a driver for that pickup vehicle too, right?
Yes.
Well, we'll volunteer our very own Dana McDaniel, who has historically been the pickup guy, that will brave the cold and go get those. So thank you so much. Okay, we have a special presentation. Matt Stifler, if you'd like to meet me, right here.
We have a special award that has been delivered for you and the finance team and we want you to know how much we appreciate you. So I'm going to read really quick what this is. And it's from the Ohio Auditor of State and it's an award with distinction presented to the city of Dublin. Matt Stifler, Finance Director. This award is presented for excellence in financial reporting related to your comprehensive annual financial report and compliance with applicable laws for the fiscal year ended in 2020. Your exemplary reporting serves as the standard for clean, accountable government representing the highest level of service to Ohioans. So thank you for working so faithfully on that and to your team as well because I know they worked hard.
Thank you.[596.62][596.62](APPLAUSE).
Only the finance department doesn't take the microphone when you hand it to them. Okay, this brings us to the citizen comments portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on this evening's agenda. Is there anyone present that would like to speak relative to items not on this evening's agenda here or virtually? Hearing none. The consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes of September 13th. Is there a request to remove this item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Thank you, Christina. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor De Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Second reading, public hearing ordinances, ordinance 57-21.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Vargo Inc. to induce it to purchase or cause the purchase of a facility, to relocate several offices to a new single office within the city and to expand that office and its associated operations and workforce within the city and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
Thank you. And Eric Meyer is here this evening for our staff report, so welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. There have been no changes to the proposed ordinance. Staff continues to recommend vote and approval. And before we get to that portion of the evening, we have Mr. Bart Serra from Vargo. He'd like to speak on the project on behalf of the company.
Wonderful. Welcome, Mr. Serra.
Thank you, Eric, for the introduction and all your work on the application that we had submitted. Good evening, council members. I'd like to thank you in advance as well for your support and consideration of our application for incentives for the city. It's an exciting year for our company. We're 50 years in business this year, which is a, which is a great accomplishment. It's been fantastic and we have, we're kind of drinking through the fire hose. We're so busy right now and it's exciting to have all that growth ahead of us, but it also comes with challenges, right? So we're here today for you to help us with some of those challenges, hopefully. Vargo is essentially a professional services company comprised of IT professionals and multiple engineering disciplines, industrial, electrical, mechanical. Our core business is to design and implement turnkey e-commerce fulfillment solutions. So we do everything from the design of the facility, and these are your million-square-foot, you know, distribution center type things, everything from the design of the interior four walls of the building, all the equipment, the automation, the robotics, as well as the software that drives that entire building. So we got like our giant erector set. It's a fun, fun environment to be in. You probably know or heard a lot of our clients. We do, we do work across the nation. The Gap is a, is a big client of ours and all of the Gap brands, American Eagle Outfitters, DHL, Target, FedEx. We've done work with Amazon in the past, DSW locally, Limited locally. So a lot of well-known, well-established brands and it's a, it's a fantastic market to be in. A little bit about our project. So three years ago, we, we kind of started that drinking from the fire hose phase and we're suddenly out of space in our Hilliard corporate, Hilliard office. So we started to do an initial site because we knew we needed to add, continue to add staff and talent to our team. We did a review of the city, hired, looked with the realtor. There really wasn't any suitable options for us at that time for a purchase of a building unless we wanted to lease a, you know, floor or something. We really didn't want to go that route. So not only that, and the timing wasn't great to do that. So we kind of took the approach of spinning off our IT team and, you know, move over a weekend and we lose zero downtime and we can have the building up and we hit the ground running kind of thing. So we separated our company from all under one roof to two roofs, granite, you know, four minutes away or five minutes away via 270, but nonetheless, still a little bit of a disassociation from what we're used to with being able to walk down the hall and grab somebody. You know, we kind of looked at that as a, as a relief valve for us, to really just buy us some time and buy us some, you know, some planning time and some planning windows so we didn't rush into, you know, one of the bigger decisions that we're going to have to make as a company without, without the time to suitably do a search and do some of those things. So that, that was the plans beyond that. Obviously, these incentive requests that we have in front of you will, will go a long way to helping, you know, helping us buffer the cost of adding additional associates and the move and the transition and all those things. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we're excited to, you know, we're already a part of the community. We moved our software office, we moved that to Metro Place. I think I talked to, to Councilman Grooms this morning, or this just a few minutes ago and said, "Had we had time, we would have probably talked to you then," but we didn't have time, so it was kind of a hurry up and go approach. But I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone asks.
Well, great, thank you. Any questions from council? I think we are just so pleased that you're here and look forward to a great partnership and look forward to watching your growth. And certainly as a city, we always stand ready to do what we can to meet whatever challenges you have and assist in any way possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vargo, for being here as well. It's great to have you tonight. Okay, is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none, council questions, discussion? Okay. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor De Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes. Well, welcome. We're glad to have you. Ordinance 58-21.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a real estate purchase agreement for the certain property owned by Mitchell E. and Kimberly S. Half located at 6191 Cos Gray Road in Franklin County, Ohio, authorizing the execution of related agreements and documents and appropriating funds therefore.
Thank you. And our staff report this evening will be from Mr. McDaniel.
Good evening, members of council. There's no change. That staff's proposing to the agreement before you and as briefed at your last council meeting. I believe the Hoffs are here this evening and I don't, I don't know if you have any, if they have anything that they would like to say this evening, but staff continues to recommend the passage of this ordinance to authorize us to, to purchase the property.
Wonderful, thank you. And we're so glad that you're here with us this evening. Did you have any comment you wanted to make before we proceed? Thank you. We certainly do appreciate that. I want to take a moment for any other public comment relative to this legislation. Hearing none, council questions, discussion? Again, Hoffs, we are just really thankful for your partnership and we look forward to assembling this parcel to serve the needs of this community and we wish you nothing but the best and we are very, very glad that you had the opportunity to be here with us this evening. With that, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor De Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Great, thank you so much. Brings us to, oh, I'd like to make a motion to waive the council rules of order to consider ordinances 59-21 and 60 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor De Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ordinance 59-21, authorizing the city manager to execute an easement with property owner Jack G. Weber III and Nicole L. Weber along the Indian Run Meadows planned use development corridor for landscape maintenance. And ordinance 60-21 regarding the property owned by Anthony L. Salustro.
Thank you. And our staff report will be Mr. Ehrman. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. There are no changes to this proposed ordinance. Staff is continuing to recommend approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak relative to this piece of legislation? Hearing none, council questions, discussion? Hearing none, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor De Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And we certainly want to thank those residents as well for their partnership and in dedicating this improvements to these, this green space corridor. So we certainly do appreciate their partnership with us. Introduction, first reading. I'd like to make a motion to waive the council rules of order to consider ordinances 61-21 through 63-21 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, would you please call the roll? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor De Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ordinance 61-21, authorizing the city manager to execute an easement with property owners Mary Blum and Stephen Blum along the Indian Run Meadows planned use development corridor for landscape maintenance. Ordinance 62-21 regarding the property owned by Chad A. Brennan and Lori L. Brennan. And ordinance 63-21 regarding the property owned by Stephen D. Parrish.
Thank you. And we will stay with Mr. Ehrman.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the city's continued efforts with this ordinance to secure additional easements along the Avery-Meerfield corridor and the Indian Run Meadows subdivision. In preparation for this ordinance this evening, you can see the three highlighted in blue parcels that will continue our efforts to secure all 28 easements. With the passage of this ordinance, we will have secured 15 of those 28. So staff will continue to move forward and continue to communicate with those residents. Staff will bring this to city council recommending approval at the October 25th council meeting for the second reading.
Great, thank you. I'd like to take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to make public comment regarding this legislation? Hearing none, council questions, discussion? You're over halfway, 15 of 28, so good. Thanks for your work on this. I know it is, it's an undertaking and we sure do appreciate it. We will have second reading, public hearing on October the 11th of that legislation. Brings us to introductions, public hearing, resolutions.
Resolution 54-21, authorizing the city manager to enter into a cooperative construction agreement with Union County for the US 33, State Route 161 post-road interchange improvements, PID number 80748.
Thank you. And we have our very own Megan O'Callaghan with us this evening, so welcome.
Good evening, members of council. Resolutions 54-21 and 55-21 both pertain to the post-road interchange project that has been included in the CIP for several years. The funding for the interchange improvements are mutually beneficial to ODOT, Dublin, Union County and the region and as such, ODOT, TRACK, ODOT District 6, Dublin, Union County and Morpsy along with private developers are all funding partners for the project. ODOT requested Dublin assemble all of the local partner funding and make a signal, single payment to ODOT for the project. And as such, the subject agreement provides that Union County will make a payment to Dublin for the Union County construction contribution of $3.5 million along with a $1.5 million contribution from FedEx. And then Dublin will assemble the local contributions and provide those to ODOT. Based on the current bidding schedule, ODOT will invoice Dublin in January of 2022 prior to the bid opening. That is planned for March of 2022. Construction for the project's currently planned to begin next spring and it has an anticipated substantial completion date in 2024. So staff recommends adoption of resolution 54-21, authorizing the city manager to enter into a cooperative construction agreement with Union County for the post-road interchange.
Great, thank you. I want to take a moment for public comment. Is there anyone present that would like to speak relative to this legislation? Hearing none, council questions, discussion? Yes, Andy.
So I guess I'd start with, it's nice to see collaboration between our neighbors and so many different parties coming together. I'm curious how the allocation of funding is arrived at. Is there some sort of formula? Are there traffic counts? What is used to determine who contributes what to the project?
For the, there's several components to the answer there. So for the private developer contributions, those do flow from the traffic study that's performed at the time of development. And then there's a negotiation that ensues between the local agency and the developer. So both of those numbers were the results of both a traffic study as well as negotiations. And then as far as the government entities' contributions to the projects, that's the result of years of discussions, applications for grant funding from ODOT, TRACK and discussions with the district about their preservation funds and then as well as negotiations with Union County. So there's, there's not a specific formula for each of the contributions per se. And again, these contributions have been under development for and discussion for several years now.
Art versus science.
Exactly.
Any other questions? I would just like to thank ODOT and Morpsy for really their partnership in this and I know that, you know, some funds were moved around and moved forward and so that this project could come to fruition. I think it's going to be a great regional opportunity to employ, or to improve the flow of traffic in this, in this area town. So certainly want to, want to thank them. That being said, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor De Rosa?
Yes.
And similarly, resolution 55-21.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the US 33, State Route 161 post-road interchange improvements, PID number 80748.
Thanks, and we'll stay with Ms. O'Callaghan.
Okay, good evening. Resolution 55-21 is the next step in ODOT's process, which is required before they will prepare the project for bidding. So they refer to this legislation from a local entity as the preliminary legislation and it includes a preliminary participatory agreement. It includes terms that identify project expenses that will be paid from the local contributions and it also establishes the general funding structure for the construction project. Staff anticipates a final participatory agreement with ODOT will be presented to city council sometime in January 2022 and then that agreement will identify the actual local contribution amount that's based on a estimate that will be prepared by ODOT between now and that time in January. Based on the current preliminary estimate, the city of Dublin is expected to contribute approximately $4.92 million to ODOT for the construction project. And in addition to our contribution to ODOT, commitments from Union County, which was the subject of the previous resolution, and also private developments including FedEx and the Ohio State University, will flow through Dublin and those contributions all total 11.17 million. Construction for the project is currently planned to begin 2022, anticipated completion in 2024. So staff recommends adoption of resolution 55-21, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the post-road interchange.
Great, thank you. Want to take a moment for public comment relative to this legislation? Hearing none, council questions, discussion?
I just had a quick comment and a thank you. This past week, the staff updated the residents on a variety of events, including the timetable here and the drawings of what the interchange will look like. So I just wanted to also say thanks to all the residents and to the staff for keeping them updated because I know they sincerely appreciate that. It's going to be a big lift for everybody, but appreciate your reaching out and keeping everybody updated on, on the project. So thank you for that.
I think one of the most significant changes is maintaining the right-in, right-out at post-preserve so that we're really grateful for their flexibility and willingness to give that a second look. So with that, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor De Rosa?
Yes.[1722.83]
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms.
Yes.
Resolution 56-21.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2021 pavement repair program.
Thank you, and we'll go back. Mr. Hammersmith, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Staff conducted a competitive bid process for the 2021 pavement repair program, and on September 14th, 2021, one bid was received and publicly opened through Bid Express by engineering staff for this program. This program is funded from the 2021-2025 Capital Improvements Program, and it's $585,000 for annual preventative maintenance within that program. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best the bid of Decker Construction Company in the amount of $143,135. I would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. We'll take a moment for a public comment relative to this piece of legislation. Hearing none. Council questions, discussion? Jane.
Yeah, I just have a question, Paul. When I went to the link, I saw quite a few little red dots where it's all, it's all of this, all of those areas that are shown here, all those red spots. This is covered by this particular contract.
Correct.
Well, that's quite a few.
Yes.
Yeah. And when you, when you put out advisory signs, just out of curiosity, how far in advance do you put those out?
We try and put it out at least a few days. We don't try and get it out too far ahead because people tend to forget, but we're going to give as much advance notice as we can. It's one of those programs that depending on weather, the schedule could change.
Right.
But we are working very hard to provide as much advance notice as possible.
Yeah, that's great. I noticed not too many of them are in commercial areas, but I would just request that when, when you hit commercial areas where road closures really impact business, to try to give as much advance notice as possible.
And most of these will be lane closures, and traffic will be maintained and flagged around the work zone.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments? Paul, there seems to be one red dot north of Glick Road that appears outside of the city limits. Is that just a GIS variation?
It, it is, I think. You're talking right where it says McKittrick Road.
Off of Manly.
Jerome Road.
It's just east of Manly.
Yeah, and I think it's actually meant to be right there on Jerome Road. I noticed that as well.
Okay. Just wanted to verify. Thank you so much. Well, with that, Jenny, would you please call the roll? Mr. Reiner. Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
That brings us to the other portion of our agenda this evening. In other business, we have our proposed 2022 meeting calendar. I know that some folks had given Jenny dates, and we have a, we have a couple of decisions to make here relative to one or the other. So I trust you all had opportunity to take a peek at those. Jenny, there are two dates that you have two options on the calendar, correct? Okay. If I read them correctly, the, the first one would be the February the 22nd or the 28th. Is that correct? So does council have a pleasure relative to the 22nd or the 28th? It's in Jenny's memo to us under Monday, February 7th meeting. Rescheduled to February 14th. Okay. Then we'll go with the 28th. So our February meetings will be the 14th and the 28th. And then we have retreat options. There are two, April the 21st and 22nd, or March the 17th or 18th. Does anyone have a preference? I think we would probably go with the March dates, just to have that earlier on in the year, if that's acceptable. Okay, Jenny, so we will go 17th and 18th. We'll have to have green lemonade or something to celebrate St. Patrick's Day. Okay, and then we will be rescheduling the March 14th special meeting to Tuesday, March the 8th. And that being said, I think we are ready to approve our 2022 agenda. So I will make a motion to approve this 2022 agenda with the notes as we just discussed. Is there a second? Thank you. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Great, thank you all for your attention to that. Appreciate it. Okay, this brings us to the Dublin 2035 Framework Update, and we have Jenny Roush with us. So welcome, Ms. Roush.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. I am excited to be before you today to talk through an update of our Dublin 2035 Public Engagement, which we included significant information in your packet, but a huge team effort for our consultant team, but also for our staff members, as well as this was a really big lift over the summer. So I just wanted to provide you the timeline slide, which you're all familiar with, but I want you to notice the green arrow across the top marching its way through these milestones so that you can see that we're making really great progress through Milestone 2. And I'm going to talk through that, which was really our large engagement period, but really pleased with how we're making progress and the input that we got with then the goal of wrapping up Milestone 2 here and moving into Milestone 3, where we're refining these and getting some big ideas for council to react to here in the near, near future. So as we updated council, probably in the middle part of June, we were just kicking off Milestone 2. So that included three big components. So the first was the expert engagement piece of that. So as you all recall, we had our work session where we had a futurist come and talk to us to help us push ourselves in thinking and to develop some transformational ideas for 2035 as we kicked off the public engagement part of our Milestone 2. So that was our big lead-in to, to the beginning of that. Then we really got into the meat of it as part of, or excuse me, during July and August, which was our, like, robust, very robust public input campaign. So it included a community questionnaire, which was available on the city's website. We also provided mailers to every Dublin resident, opportunities on social media, through all of our email channels, as well as then staffed locations at the Dublin Farmers Market, and then on the East and West Plazas throughout various times over the summer to get responses. And we had over 600 responses received as part of this public input, which was really, we were really pleased to see that and really encouraged by everyone's response and interest in a number of our staffed options. When people were, when residents were approached by staff, they had already heard of it and knew about it and were really already informed, which was a really great, great for us to hear. So all of our public notice and engagement was really going a long way. And then the third part of this milestone was the stakeholder engagement. So boards and commissions were also engaged, Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals and Architecture Review Board, as well as then our frontline supervisors of city staff. And we had an additional 100-plus responses from all those groups as well. And those three response groups are all separated out individually in your packet, so you could see resident and public comment versus stakeholders versus boards and commissions. That way you could understand where all the different comments came, came from. So I just wanted to give a quick, couple of quick highlights, which we outlined in your memo, really, and looking at all these responses, how to divide those up in a meaningful way. So we really looked at new ideas that were brought forward that we hadn't heard of before, or sort of a twist on some of the ones that we maybe heard a little bit about, but something we wanted to highlight as sort of the new big idea. So again, trying to maintain, excuse me, sustainability was sort of the large bucket under that, related to being carbon neutral, looking at solar generation for community events, so having an opportunity to help leverage that. Mobility, obviously, that's a big, a big consistent theme that we're seeing as, which would include then, you know, looking at electric vehicle gas stations. And then obviously, on the flip side, making sure the pedestrians and bicycles are coming first, that we're the most advanced city when it comes to mobility. And then under quality of life, under these new, the newer ideas would be something called the Gathering Place, which is in Tulsa, Oklahoma. It's a large open space. It seems reminiscent of where we're going with Riverside Crossing Park, but that place where you can come and all, all of your park and rec needs are met, as well as then someone suggested underground tunnels so that you could have sort of a mini-city underground. So again, just some fun ideas to get your juices flowing and, and make us be thinking of things in a new way. And then our second sort of bucket of ideas, again, this is just a couple, couple of those, but really validating things that we've heard so far from council and from our directors as part of our initial discussion. Again, sort of falling in these same themes of sustainability, mobility, quality of life, and our fiscal health. So again, making sure that we're leading the way in terms of sustainability and environmental protection, multi modes of transportation, light rail, areas where there's no automobiles permitted, looking at a cultural center, regional sports complex, and then obviously leveraging our partners with, partnerships with schools, whether that be the high school or university level. And then the last group of things are things I called daily operations. So obviously, as part of this, people have ideas and comments and concerns to share that we want the public to know that we've heard that, so we'll be sharing that out. And I believe Homer already did share that out with several of our groups just so that people are aware of those. So we're helping to sort those out, just so that if there are needs that need to be met from a daily operations perspective, that we're sharing that out amongst everyone so we can be aware and improve ourselves even in the small ways. So with that, we are then looking at beginning Milestone 3. So what that means to us is then we will be taking all these great ideas that council, directors, as well as in all of our large public input, and really refining those down. So as you look at these ideas, and I think we've talked about that before, is there are some ideas that are sort of small on their own, but when you put them together, they, they make a big idea. So I think the opportunity at this point is for us to take all these ideas and refine those further into developing that big idea list with the goal of getting that before city council so that you can start reviewing and prioritizing what, what you want us to study further, because some of these are going to need some additional study in terms of feasibility, other information, and how do we help you refine that? So our goal would be to go from our 700, 800 ideas down to a manageable number here that we can then start looking at investigating further. And then once council has the opportunity to do that, we would then look for another opportunity for public engagement to understand the public's interest and input on how to prioritize these as well. That way we can make sure we're checking back in and aligning with, with the public's perspective as well. So then, assuming that all goes as planned, then our future steps would be then our final refinement with council, and then council's adoption, and then implementation. So that's where we're, we're moving towards here in the next couple of months as well. And then we're looking towards a council work session here before the end of the year to, to get to this initial big ideas refined list for council's input. And I do have a video, which I'm hoping is going to work, that Lindsay and her team put together, and if not, we'll just have to post it on the website, but I'm hopeful that it's going to work for me tonight, just to get some excitement about... This is going to be anticlimactic if I can get it to work.
Municipal fiber optic broadband.
A big zip line beside the link.
A bigger Irish festival.
Make it weak.
A fairytale in downtown Dublin.
Enhanced transportation modes and connectivity.
An athletic park on a large scale that would draw a lot of sporting events to the city.
Bike lanes.
EV incentives and more charging stations.
Transit-oriented mini hubs.
High-speed rail connecting us to major metropolitan areas.
Autonomous electric transit.
A natural river walk along the Scioto River.
An auditorium.
Indoor pickleball courts.
Turn the downtown Dublin area into a walking-focused environment.
Underground eateries, parks, and shops.
More solar power in city buildings.
An environmental-themed festival to celebrate Earth Day.
Interactive information kiosks.
Electric city vehicles, trucks, and mowers.
Multi-purpose facility for large events.
So I just wanted to share that, and thanks to Lindsay and her team for putting that together just to get a little excitement about all the input and the opportunity for, for those to be shared with council. We'll post that out on our website as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have this evening.
Great. When, when you post that, will you, will there continue to be opportunity for public engagement and comment, or will that piece close by the time this piece goes out?
That will have closed at this, at this point. But again, as I mentioned, when we move forward with, I mean, we'll always, if people have comments or questions, they can always contact me, and I can help answer questions, and we'll include that as part of our update. But yeah, there'll be another chance then as, as we refine these and move forward for people to comment further.
Great. Comments?
Yeah, you know, I know on the website now, there's still a link to put your comments in, but when you go to it, doesn't take the comments. So, you know, personally, I think accepting the comments can't hurt. You can just, you know, assemble them. I understand you're going on a timeline, but, but I think the comments are always... So I would, you know, do that. And the other thing on, on public input, COVID kind of set us back a little bit to be able to talk together as a community other than at Bridge Park, which we did at the North Market. But if there is an opportunity at this next level to bring people together, because I think brainstorming and creative juices flow a lot better when you're sitting around the table and one idea sparks another better than just putting it on, you know, on a piece of paper, gives, gives us more chance to, as a community, begin to envision what the possibilities are. So I would definitely like to see that happen. So I think wonderful, it's been fun. I cannot believe all the comments that are on here. It is like amazing. It's like looking at when we asked them to name the bridge and who would ever. And this is what's so fun, because even though we have had the opportunity with staff and especially to just kind of envision things, it's also interesting to see how they're congealing in areas of interest, too. And if you could put these on the website, I think that stimulates ideas as well. You know, many of these, I think, would get other people to start thinking and get more ideas also. But thank you, Jenny. It's great work.
Thanks, Jane. Other comments? It was interesting to read through the comments and how many have been shaped by the past 18 months, particularly around the fiber at home things we've been talking about and, and much of those items, so.
I would make one comment. So Jenny, as you're putting the, doing the refinement stage, I, I think what you did here with the videos, I mean, we're in an era now where we can, even if we're bringing things to life in, in not a concrete way, in a visual way, I think that is as important as getting people in a room together, because I think we can begin to see things. So I'll just put a plug into, when you're refining, think audiovisual. Thank you.
And I think as you, as you refine and you cluster these thoughts and try to coagulate them in their respective areas, if you could put how many comments are relative to each respective area, it would help us to understand a little bit more of the priorities of the community, which could aid in our decision-making of, you know, sequencing and timing. Great. Well, thank you. I know this is a tremendous amount of work, and the, we never leave the planning team without a lot to do. So thanks to you and all the team for continuing to shape this path that we're going on. So appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Chris, can I make one other comment that I thought was interesting about, I'm sorry, about, about this? There were comments in here about things to be careful not to do, which I think are important balancing comments as we go forward, because we can bring forth a million ideas, but, but if... but if there's a consensus about something that we shouldn't do, I think that's almost as important as a big idea.
Yeah, I saw a lot of that relative to green space.
Right, yeah, and density and congestion and traffic and that sort of thing. So I think it would be nice to know how many of those comments surface so that as we look forward, we can make sure that we create a good balance.
Great. Thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Stifler.
Matt's going to bring us the operating budget revenue projections.
Guess we did backwards, where we're at and where we're going, right? We did where we're going and now where we're at, right?
We're going to get there. So this is the 2022 operating budget kicking off with the operating revenue estimate presentation as we begin to have that discussion. As part of the schedule, tonight, we're having the presentation of revenues. The first hearing and overview of the operating budget will be at the October 11th council meeting. The following Monday, we will have a operating budget work session to dive into the details a little bit deeper. On the following Monday, we will have a work session prior to the council meeting, and then we will have a second hearing, likely postponed, similar to how the CIP was handled at that October 25th meeting. And then hopefully, we have an operating budget to pass at the November 8th meeting. If we're not yet ready, there are other opportunities in November to pass it before we'd run into a timing problem. So we're significantly ahead of schedule at this point, having this conversation. Tonight, we're going to look at the 2021 operating budget. I think it's important to know where we are before we talk about where we might be going. We'll talk about the 2021 income tax. We'll do an overview of revenues and funds, including the operating revenues identified here, and then we'll do a summary of operating revenues by fund. So with regard to the 2021 operating budget, this is a Munis report, and Munis revenues are shown as negative. That's just a nuance of Munis. Don't worry about it too much. I just wanted to show the operating revenues and operating expenditures. These are as of actually Friday, so these are pretty up to date. Original budget, when we passed the operating budget last year, we had a negative variance of $7.8 million. As of Friday, our variance was actually positive $6.8 million. So we are solidly in the balanced budget territory at this point in the operating budget, and I expect that to continue. Are there any questions on the 2020 operating? That's very high level, but it's very good news, so I thought I would show it. Okay. Regarding the 2021 income tax, I have additional good news to share. Much like at the CIP, where we increased the revised income tax estimate $2 million, I'd like to do that again today to start this conversation. That original estimate of $94 million was based on revenues through about the middle of July. Now we have revenues up through yesterday, Friday, actually, that continue to demonstrate that continued strong growth. Through the end of August, it was 11.7% year to date. Through September 24th, it was just under 11% or $7.6 million ahead of the 2020 actual estimate. So we're going to increase that to $96 million. Here's some of the numbers that would support that movement. So this is a 4% increase from 2020 actuals. Again, we're up almost 11% year to date. That increase is strong and consistent across all three categories. The one that I'm particularly pleased with is actually the withholding. It's been in that 6% to 7% range all year, consistently steady, and it remains so. The strength of this estimate, if we were to do a sensitivity analysis, you could predict if we continued at our current year-to-date trend, we'd actually end up at 102.2 million. So 96 is still fairly conservative in that world. If we have no growth, the remaining three months of 2020 will end up at 99.8 million. So there's still a significant amount of additional likely growth that I would say we would see over and above that estimate. Graphing this, we have an estimate of 96 million and then again, a projected actual of 99.9. So this kind of gives you the history and where our income tax is in relation to what we projected in the CIP, which is those 23 through 26 numbers. So 2022 estimated operating revenues, the following funds are what we consider operating funds. There are a number of funds in the city, including these operating funds, capital funds, enterprise funds and agency funds. So when we talk about operating revenues, we're talking about these funds specifically. Couple of interesting things to note on this slide that make it different from prior year slides are we have the addition of the coronavirus relief fund. That's a new fund that came into existence last year. We have the local fiscal recovery fund. Every federal grant gets its own fund for federal accounting, so that fund is a new operating fund as of this year. The coronavirus relief fund will likely go away for 2022. We have to spend all of that money by the end of the year, but because it's in some of the reports, I want to include it one more year and then it'll go away. The local fiscal recovery fund will likely be with us until 2024, as those revenues are required to be spent within that timeframe. The other interesting thing to note on this is that generally, the operating revenues, the general fund has supported the street maintenance and repair fund, the state highway fund, cemetery, recreation, pool and safety. As you all know, last year was the first year that the general fund supported the hotel motel tax fund. That's going to continue in this operating budget, so I've taken it away as an exception and it is right now the new normal and we'll have to conversate about what we want that to look like. You'll notice it does not include, for the first time in a very long time, the street maintenance and repair fund. The increase in gas taxes make that fund sustainable if we don't make a transfer from that fund to the capital fund. So in an interest to save general fund revenues because of the questions that revolve around income taxes, that fund will be self-sustaining next year. As you would expect, income taxes make up a lion's share of our operating revenues. They continue to make up over 90% of our general fund, and that being the largest of our operating funds continues to dominate the revenue. The good news is we are projecting operating revenues of $93.3 million or an increase of 7.8% over the prior year's operating budget. This is also slightly more than the 2019 operating budget, so we are seeing some growth in that area. The charges for services are predominantly recreation, dispatch, general fund revenue in the form of development fees, and the Irish festival revenues are all charges for services. A large category this year that has not typically been a large category is that intergovernmental revenue fund at 6%. That is the American Rescue Plan funding of $2.5 million next year really bumps up those revenues significantly above their historical level. In terms of looking at the local taxes and breaking these categories down a little bit more, you can see kind of there the individual growth between this budget and the prior year's budgeted amount. There's an increase of 4.2% in income taxes, an increase of 48% in hotel motel tax, and I wanted to talk about that a little bit. That's kind of a weird function of percentages. Hotel motel taxes declined by 50%, so to get back to where they were, they have to go up by 100%. And that's just the way Warren Buffett would tell you percentages work and why you shouldn't try to get a homerun because you have to double your losses at some point. So we are going to see a 47% increase over what we budgeted. That really equates to a 5% to 10% increase over actuals. We've been significantly and consistently ahead of our 2021 hotel motel budget. We budgeted for 40% of normal revenues. We're at 57% year to date, and next year, we're budgeting 60. So that looks like a large increase. I actually hope that's a conservative increase. Property taxes, we had a moderate gain in property taxes. As you can see, most of the intergovernmental revenue fund increase is due to those American Rescue Plan funding. We are continuing to project a recovery in recreation. We have about $450,000 that we think we're going to recover there. That is predominantly from what I hope to be next summer, a normal camp year. We had a non-normal camp year this year despite some of the recovery and relapse that you might have with this pandemic, but it really impacted the camp season. I'm hoping that we can have a normal camp season and that we'll see that recovery. The rest of the funds are pretty standard, inflationary increases. Interest is going down. Actually, I'm explaining the next slide. Interest is going down by about 10%. That's a function of declining interest rates, but they were declined last year. It's really also a function of declining fund balance. We purchased some land this year. We didn't issue some debt this year. We've made some strategic investments which lower that fund balance, which is likely to lower future interest earnings. And the miscellaneous revenue increase that was in there are increases in revenues related to a Dublin Irish festival, assuming we get to a point where we're having a normal festival. We have some additional ticket and token revenue, well, former token, now beverage revenue that we think we'll be able to earn during that festival. In terms of how this revenue estimate fits in historically, you can see there the budgeted revenue and the actual revenue for prior years, 2020 and prior, the budgeted revenue for this year and next year. You can see that we're making a pretty significant recovery, essentially back to where we were at 2020 levels, pre-pandemic levels. Fits in nicely with the overall trajectory of our revenues, given what we experienced last year. Breaking this down a little bit more, so the income tax estimate for next year is based on this year's new revised estimate of 96 million. Next year's estimate will be 94 million, so that's a decrease of 2.1% from this revised estimate. Want to talk a little bit about this and put it into some context. If 2021 actuals are 99 to 103 million, which are realistic based on our current trend, then this estimate is a reduction of 5% to 10% from remote work before we would have to make any budgetary adjustments. And that's really why I'm continuing to try to be conservative, but not unrealistic with our income tax estimates. I think there's a higher degree of variability with regard to income taxes next year than probably ever before with the potential unknown impact of remote work on our environment. But this gives us a pretty good amount of cushion between where last year's actuals are and next year's actuals have to be. Further kind of increasing that cushion is the idea that you would expect income taxes to grow 2% or 3% naturally next year. So that's an additional cushion that we could see recede in a remote working environment. And then the other point, I guess, is that withholdings make up about 3/4 of our income tax holdings. Those would be the only part impacted, so withholdings would have to recede greater than 10% to have a 10% overall impact. So that's a further ways we're kind of building in layers of protection when we talk about that $94 million estimate.
Matt, excuse me, can I ask one?
Sure.
So you're talking about withholding versus net profits. Is that, the 93% is?
That, sorry. Withholding is about 75% to 80% of our income tax. Net profits are about 10%. And then individual income taxes, individual net profits is about 10%.
And then the net profits likely would not be subject to refund?
Correct. They're unimpacted by the impact of remote work. We have about 20% that is unimpacted by this. So we believe this continues our conservative philosophy in an environment of uncertainty with an estimate for next year that is $5 million below projected prior year's actual. That's a pretty good amount below actual to start a year. This is also, you know, given by income tax growth is being driven by our top 100 and 500 employers. It really is broad-based, mid-size, smaller companies that are propelling this growth. We do see continued stability and new entrants into our largest employers. You know, we have had some very successful economic development agreements in recent years that have brought in some large employers. The other large employers that used to be in our top 10 are still here and producing good revenues, so we feel comfortable with our largest employers and we expect to see continued growth in new entrants in the market. So hopefully, we don't just have to rely on an inflationary growth factor next year. Hopefully, we can have some new growth as well. Any questions about the income tax estimate?
I had several. I don't know if you want to wait till we're done or you?
Whatever is your pleasure.
So I recall in some previous years, and maybe I'm just getting ahead of my, the, when you produce what in this cycle, there was a great chart or two of our top 15 employers in the city. Could we do that again?
We can look back on what was previously provided and definitely get you some information.
And I don't remember if it was 10 or 15, but back to your point about who were the biggest contributors now, I know there has been some changes in that, and I think it would be useful for us to see that.
Absolutely.
As well. I saw back on, sort of back to the net income or the profit revenues, there was an $8 million. I mean, it's much higher. I think that gave us all.
Sorry.
We're to go here. We'll go back to the first slide here where you did the annual year-over-year projections of net profits. It's like double what it was in 19 or 20, and it's way back. There you are. Is that a one-time thing in 2021 or, I mean, we saw five, we saw six, we saw five, we see almost nine?
Sure, there is some variability in that. I'll get with our tax director and confirm what exactly he might believe is going on with that.
Because a couple of these, you know, when we talk about how conservative or aggressive we might want to be, as you mentioned, the relief funds are sort of one-time funds and a couple million. So, you know, or do we project that these are going to continue? So a couple of those, when we start to talk about the operating expenses and how we think about these tranches of maybe $2.5 to $3 million, I think that will help us as we start to make decisions and trade-offs. So just understanding some of these things that may not track forward.
Okay.
Or, again, looking at some of those larger employers that are continuing to grow, some things that, you know, may really track forward. I think those would be helpful, so thank you.
There we go. Okay, great. The next revenue I wanted to call out specifically was recreation fund revenues. The chart on the left gives you the monthly breakdown of revenues by year. I show it by monthly because there's a huge seasonality to recreation revenues. As you can see, April and May and March are really the most important three months by a wide margin, and that really is the window that hurt us when the pandemics began because it eliminated camps. Everybody signed up for camps and then they had to get refunds, which is why May and June are negative revenue months last year. You can see that this year, the camp revenue really didn't materialize. That orange bar in April really is only about half of what it would normally be, and you can see that it kind of was where you would expect it to be in May and June. That was likely because parents were delaying making a decision on these types of camps. My hope is that next year, we see a much more traditional line in April, and that'll get us a long way to that $450,000 increase in revenue. On the right-hand side of this slide, you can see the 2019 revenue was about $3.9 million, and we had a cost recovery of 56%. Last year, with the shutdown and the significant impact of COVID, revenues were down to 1.4 million, and we had a cost recovery of 25%. This year, you can see a recovery. Current recreation revenues are 1.8 million, and I expect us to hit our budget number as winter programming begins to take effect. The cost recovery as of today is 47%. That's not surprising. It's always extremely high after the early, and then it tends to wane in that third and fourth quarter. So I would expect us to end up at that 35% to 40% mark at year end, which would be consistent with a recovery from 25%, you know, a stepped-up recovery. Next year, with the additional camp revenue, we're projecting 2.4 million, a cost recovery of approximately 45% due to this increase in camp revenue, but we're not quite at the cost recovery level required by the cost, the recreation cost recovery policy. I think that'll probably take until 2023. And the next slide kind of examines why I think this is going to take a little bit more time. These are two graphs. The one on the left is 2021 past member trends. It's actually a kind of a zoomed-in version of the far-hand, the far-right-hand side of the right-hand graph. You can see that on January 1st, we had 4,300 memberships. We continued to lose memberships through the start of the year, and we've just recently, as of the 19th of September, recovered all the memberships that we lost this year. So you can see it's kind of a V shape. There were people leaving. Now there are people coming back, and we're seeing that membership begin to increase. If you look at the right-hand column, that's the more of an annual multi-year look at it dating back to November of 19. You can see that the graph on the left kind of extends that right-hand side, kind of gives a little more context to the membership losses and the membership gain. But when you put it in larger context, there's been a significant number of annual membership losses. These aren't losses that are likely to be recovered in any one quarter, but that over time, people will likely return to the recreation center until we reach some new normal of recreation memberships. You can see that overall, from its peak to its trial, we had a 48% reduction in memberships. And that's significant because annual memberships, as noted here in 2019, were $1.1 million of recreation revenue. So they represent, you know, 1.1 of 3.9 million, a significant portion of those revenues, and they're lacking is going to lag our cost recovery until the membership. and their lacking is going to lag our cost recovery until the memberships can recover. We're also seeing a lag in daily memberships. My hope is that those will recover quicker. We could even see a growth in those as people try out coming back in the future. But those two membership categories are really going to continue to drag on the recreation fund in 2022.
Hey, Matt?
Yes.
I'm assuming the answer to this is yes, that there's a plan to survey those that haven't renewed to get some sort of an estimate of if and when?
Yeah, recreation is working on a membership recovery plan, as obviously they're aware of the importance of this. And I think we'll be bringing some changes forward in the cost study ordinance to kind of be a little bit more new and innovative with trying to drive our membership growth. So I would expect that they'll have more to say about that at the cost study ordinance. So with regard to hotel motel revenues, you can see that in 2019, the fund revenues totaled $4.9 million. This was roughly split 50-50 between hotel motel tax and events administration other revenue. $2.4 million was earned in hotel motel tax in 2019 that was deposited into fund 232. In 2020, that went to below $1 million. In 2021, we budgeted that this number would be 40%, roughly 40% of the 2019 high, which was $960,000. Next year, we're budgeting that this will go to $1.4 million or 60%. So we're budgeting a phased recovery in these revenues. Again, as I mentioned, year-to-date revenues in this in this fund of that type are 57%. So while the budget jump is large, we're almost hitting that 60% number this year, and I hope that we'll be able to continue that. There was some recent good news, as you'll see in the August monthly financial report that's distributed to you tomorrow. When you look at the July hotel motel tax revenues, the revenues were almost almost identical to 2019. So in that brief window between recovery and delta, people were going to the hotels as much as they've ever gone to the hotel. So that gives me some hope that we will see a quick recovery to some number, a long-term recovery of 100% of our 2019 revenues will probably take some more time as business isn't like to recover overnight. But I'm hopeful we'll get to a higher number than 60% relatively quickly and then slowly move to that 100% number. So we're budgeting 60% for next year to be conservative. We're also estimating a normal Dublin Irish Festival as we did in 2021.
Matt, did that contemplate increased rates? I know that, you know, as I travel, hotel rates are way up.
I use, I I talked to Scott during at DC, at the Visit Dublin, Ohio, to really help me make this estimate. He has a much better pulse on hotel everything than I do, really. So when he said that he was estimating at 60%, that's the number that I use. That's consistent with what we thought it would be last year. You know, I'm I'm hopeful that rates will recover. I know that they're they're pretty low right now, or they have been. If we see that recovery in rates, even if we don't see a recovery in occupancy, we'll certainly see more revenue, and that would be a great start.
Yeah, I would imagine if you're at 60% occupancy, you're going to be at far more of 60% of your revenue because rates are have, at least my experience, have been quite high.
Okay. So we are estimating a normal Dublin Irish Festival revenue in this budget, similar to how we did in 2021. So if there are, in fact, some external forces that cause us to have to do some type of modified festival, my expectation would be in March, April next year, we would bring you a pro forma of sorts of the expected revenue and expenditure so that you could make a decision on what the festival looks like, what its cost recovery is, what the the appropriate path forward. But this budget will posit that 2022 is a full recovery Irish Festival, just as we did in 2021. And we are estimating increased ticket and beverage sales revenues. We were very happy with the switch away from tokens that we're able to kind of test in a way at this smaller festival. It was very successful, well-received, and we're looking forward to moving that forward in the future. We think that'll give us at least some pricing flexibility that will allow us to increase revenue as well as leading to a better patron experience because tokens are probably not what we're looking for in a post-pandemic world particularly.
Matt, can I ask you on the on the advanced administration, primarily most of this this revenue is coming from Irish Festival, but we have so many events in the city. And I'm just kind of curious whether or not, you know, you know, where other funds might might come from in order to, you know, I guess what I'm looking for is, we could have sponsorships and bring revenue in for a multitude of events. Do we simply concentrate mainly on the Irish Festival, or are there funds in here from other events?
There are funds from all the events. Obviously, the Irish Festival dwarfs all of them. The only other one of significant note would be the Fourth of July does bring in significance and tough. I haven't looked at, I think it brings in as much as all the other events combined, roughly, would be my estimate. So I'd have to look at that to get more specific numbers. We have the numbers broken down by event. It's just that outside of the Irish Festival, they're they're not necessarily significant in the context of 2.5 million. But yeah, we do have revenue from all the events.
Okay, thanks.
So putting these all together at the fund level, which is how you've traditionally viewed this, the 2021 operating budget had operating revenues of 86.5 million. We are increasing that to 93.3, which is an increase of 6.8 roughly million or 7.8%. You can see there that the change is in the general fund is the income tax increase, the increase in recreation, the pool, the North Pool was very well-received. I think pool revenues are forever and permanently at a new, much higher normal, which is great news. That pool was very successful from that standpoint. Hotel motel tax will see an increase. And then we also have $2.5 million from the local fiscal recovery fund that we will receive the second tranche of that funding in the third, fourth quarter of next year. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
I just have, I have one. I think when we were, when you were talking about the revenue and the new job growth and that sort of thing, I think it would be interesting to, as Kathy said, maybe get get data, but it on some of the new job growth on the top 100. But I think with all the the great work that Colleen and the economic development staff has done, I would be fascinated to know how many new jobs we brought in this year, what those what the categories of those jobs line up next to our economic development plan and our objectives for that, to kind of understand how successful we are at moving along the path that we had set for ourselves. But to understand not only just the new job growth, the potential new job growth that that's on the horizon with these economic development plans. And I think also, interestingly, the types of job, whether or not they're they're in the biotech field, whether they're in the IT field, those sorts of things, I think, because it's it sort of helps us look at the whole economic development plan as a whole and gauge how we're doing. Because obviously, you brought good news tonight, and Colleen's brought good news all along. So it would be nice to kind of see those things together.
Sure, I'll be happy to work with Colleen and see what we can we can provide.
Great. Yeah.
I had just one more request, and maybe it's simpler than than some of them. Because 2020 was was such an anomaly year, I think it would be helpful, at least to me, to see some actual columns in in some of this, some of these numbers. So when you when you're doing your budget to budget, I think either having a 19 or a 20, well, we wouldn't have an actual next to us, I think it helps us. Because several times, as you said, we're recovering back to 19, we're thinking to what normal is. I think having that as particularly as we talk about, you know, revenue growth, et cetera, I think that would be really helpful. I'm hopeful that's not too difficult.
Not at all. Happy to provide that.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Great. Well, appreciate it, Matt. I know we have a number of other sections to get through, but it's it's nice to have that overview. Okay, that brings us to the staff comments portion of our agenda.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Counsel reports, we'll we'll start with committee reports and the admin committee.
Yes, thank you. I just had some follow-up to our retreat. We had several action items, as you all know. Some of those have been moving along, and I would like to, if I could this evening, make a motion so that we could advance some of that work. So I'd like to make a motion to refer a couple items, the virtual meeting discussion, the proclamation recognition policy, and the building use policy to the admin committee for further discussion. The outcome of that, of course, will be a report back to counsel, but make that motion.
I will second that. Jenny, which place?
Ms. Fox.
Yes. Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor M. Rosegrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiter?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Great. Anything else from admin? Appreciate that. Community Development Committee, Mr. Reiter?
Nothing, ma'am.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Ms. Saludo?
Thank you. We met on September 21st. We discussed treasury management, specifically duties and responsibilities of finance director and the investment advisor. We had three plus one. They were introduced. They it's they have a very interesting service, strongly related to data and bringing together these incredible data points to help us both save money and generate new money. So that was pretty exciting. And Andy had asked for a follow-up phone call with our investment advisors. And as we talked a little bit more about investment management, we did have Meter come and talk with us. And for those of you who've been around for a little bit, those are our investment management. We also had Manning and Napier come as well. We talked about the investment policy that we have, which has been around since 13, 2013. We did have some changes that were made to the policy, so those will be coming forward to council after we review them one more time. And then we talked a little bit about the best way to potentially sort of check up on our investments. And I was trying to think back, and Dana, maybe you can help me remember, I think we had Meter come and present to all of council, but I think it was a council workshop, question mark, like maybe three or four years ago? It's been a while. Does that sound about right?
Maybe. I'm sorry, I'd have to check on that.
Yeah, so, but Andy's question was, how do we really make sure that we are getting the most out of our investment advisors and managers? Is there a different process that we could use? And so what I committed to do was to bring that discussion here to council and talk that through just a little bit. I did have a couple of follow-up conversations with a couple of different folks, and some of the ideas were another committee or things like annually having our investment advisors come and talk to council as a whole at a workshop. Another idea, and this one actually came from from Matt, which I think is has some real potential to it, is the potential to have somebody who basically doesn't have any skin in the game with us, who has investment expertise, come and really review the work that our investment management companies are doing for us, to make sure that they're they're really doing what they should be doing. So those are some of the ideas that have been kind of thrown out, so I wanted to bring that to council for discussion. Andy, do you want to go first, since one of the ideas was yours?
I would just add, we discussed monitoring of the investments and whose responsibility that is. It's been falling on Matt's plate, and the investment policy statement as written has a provision for an investment advisory committee, which we don't have, and I think we should have. We're looking at a pot of over $200 million now. So it's it's we've grown from a village to a city, and typically, funds of that size would have an investment advisory committee that consists of experts from outside that would evaluate the performance of the managers write the IPS investment policy statement. Having investment advisors provide that kind of advice, obviously, there's a conflict of interest when we're asking them whether they think there should be a monitoring or termination clause in the IPS. Right now, the IPS does not include any verbiage that would indicate when an investment advisor should be replaced, how we're how often we're monitoring, what the criteria would be for hiring or firing a manager. So I think the the basic nuts and bolts are there, we just need to bolster it, and I think we've gotten to a point where we need to have some outside help.
So I've thought about this since our finance committee meeting. Committees just make me a little nervous, and I don't know if maybe we could retain a consultant that we interacted with. I think there's probably not a more important job that this council does than look after the purse strings. I mean, it doesn't get much more important than, and like we talked about at the committee meeting, I think there are things that we do now that aren't just our portfolio management. For example, the banking of land and real estate and all those other kinds of things that we, if this was my home budget that I was running, those would be extra assets I would be worried about taking care of and monitoring and all of that sort of thing. I get what you're saying, Andy, about having somebody who would be sort of in that space to provide advice. My my concern would be if there were a committee made up, would it be people on council, like like the administrative committee? Once you start a committee of outsiders, I worry about their interests creeping into the equation. If there are people on that committee, how would we find them? How would we hire them? How would we get them, you know, put them on the committee, appoint them to the committee? And if they are in that space, either you would think they have to have an expertise, right, in that field? So they're going to have to be in that investment community. And when you start having them passing judgment on what their opinion is about the advisors that we are hiring as a council, I trust, and I will trust, that this body has always made that decision and will continue to make that decision. That's why you folks are elected to sit up here, is to make those decisions. If if having someone give you advice is a good idea, I can see that. But when you have a committee, then you have things like the committee recommends that you do this, and you're going to have five people or seven people or whatever it is stand up at that podium as experts that we appointed because they're experts, telling this council how to handle their investment advisors. I just think that, and maybe it's just because of what I do for a living, I'm always trying to anticipate worst-case scenario. What do we do if the worst-case scenario happens? What happens if this committee stands up and recommends we do something that we aren't really comfortable with? But as the experts that we've appointed to give us advice, now you're in a very, very difficult situation. So I think.
Somebody thought it was a good idea at that time. You can never eliminate conflicts of interest entirely. There are always, you you have to try harder to connect the dots sometimes, but what I envision are folks that manage an endowment for Ohio State University. They're not at Merrill Lynch or Morgan Stanley, some insurance company. It could be Ohio Dominican's Endowment Fund. There are pension funds and endowment funds all around central Ohio that have some really smart people that they just serve as a sounding board. So you have three, four, five members of that committee with areas of expertise in that area. We can explore the the consultant. I just know that in my experience, funds like ours typically have investment advisory committees, which is what is outlined in the IPS as it's written now.
It sounds to me like that it'd be good for the committee to keep talking about some of these possibilities because it is, as you said, a complicated situation. I do know, because of the nature of the government reality of what we do, our our ability to invest and our risk appetite, there's only so much of that 200 million that we're going to feel good investing at some level, right? So from a policy perspective, looking at the policies will be as as important as the committee. So I think coming back and looking at those investment policies, because we're hiring people to manage the money as we have asked them to manage that money. So if we have some different type of 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 policy or risk tolerance or or that type of thing, I mean, that that puts fences around some of this stuff. So I think, again, returning, looking at some of the fences that the that councils, this one and many before, have put, I think it does put some frameworks around her for how much of that are we really talking about actively managing? And I'm not sure it's 200 million. So I think continuing to explore both the policy and some, you know, what are we what are we talking about from practice before we sort of decide one way or the other would be a prudent thing to do in the finance committee. to do in the finance committee, seems to me.
As I recall, when they were here last, and I don't recall exactly how many years ago it was, we had asked them a number of different questions, because our rate of return was less than inflation. And so we asked a number of pointed questions to them, and what my takeaway from that time was, is that there was so little we had to choose from, to Kathy's point of which we had the appetite for, but far more than that, it was what we were allowed to. There was, we maybe had the appetite for a whole lot more than what we were doing, but we didn't have the ability to invest in those ways. And I think that's when we started talking about possibly investing in things like land and other things that we could liquidate if it became appropriate to do so. So, you know, maybe we would start with bringing these folks in and hearing that message again about what we're, you know, what we're capable of doing. And again, it may have changed. This was a number of years ago, but there wasn't really a lot of management to it, because there was so little we could do. I guess I would like to have that conversation before we determine if it's important that people oversee this.
This is very frustrating for me, because this is what I do every day. And there are so many variables that we don't even know about. So to say, well, we're getting a yield of .5, but there's nothing out there. Well, is there? How do you, that's what they're telling us. How do we know that's accurate?
I would agree, and that's why that conversation might be important, again, to bring them in, to make sure that we understand what we're capable of.
But who's capable of asking the tough questions? Who's going to, what's your standard deviation? What's your sharp ratio? You know, it's not just about return, it's about risk also. And there's a continuum of both. So to say, well, we don't want to take any risk. Well, as measured by what? Quantify that for me. So it's very frustrating for me to see $217 million that is going unchecked, more or less because we don't have folks asking the tough questions. I just, I see it all the time. I'm very skeptical of investment managers in general, because I think most of what they do is smoke and mirrors. And they're good at selling concepts. And so I think we, a committee, a consultant, whatever you want to do, at least once a year, you need to push the buttons a little bit and have confidence that we know for absolute certainty that we are getting the highest net rate of return. What are their fees? Are their fees negating the entire small, little yield that they're able to generate in this economy? I can't answer that question.
Andy, I agree with you. I think that that's right. I just, I also know that difficult it can be, once a committee is established, to unravel that committee if you find that you don't need it. It can be a real challenge. What I'd like to do is, part of what Chris has said, I'd like to bring them in. I do think that having some type of an outside advisor who is not them, right, who has a level of investment expertise that can ask those questions, is important. I don't have any issue with that. I'm just struggling to say, like, right now, as of today, I think we need a new committee. That's what I'm struggling with. I'm not struggling with trying to keep them in check and ask them tough questions. I think that's absolutely legit. We should be doing that, right? I'm agreeing with you there. I just don't know that I'm ready to jump headfirst into a whole other committee. I'm just, I'm not there with you yet. But I am there with you in terms of holding them accountable and finding the people to help us do that. But that's, again, this is something that needs to be done at a council level, not necessarily even at a committee level, because it's all of our responsibility. That's what we were all elected to do, is to pay attention to the money that this city is dealing with. That's why I think it needs to be at a council-level workshop.
Dana, do you have some thoughts on what might be a good path forward of figuring out if the committee is the right way to do it, or if it's an annual check-in by council as a whole, or what that might look like?
Yeah, I don't know if they're good thoughts, but I'll give you some thoughts. You know, I think, first of all, thank you for taking the time to spend in committee and really think this through. And secondly, thanks for questioning that process, because we should always be doing that, which is why we come to committee on a routine basis in a finance committee for oversight. Just a few clarifications there. You know, there's money in the investment portfolio, granted. There's significant dollars there, which is a good thing. The conservative approach on those dollars are limited to what you can do, I think, by law, and probably there may be some constraints there. So we probably ought to make sure we know what those are. Yes, there's a possibility of yet another advisory committee. I hear the discussion on that. Could be a good check-in. I think the one thing that was coming to my mind as we were having this conversation, a great conversation, was the idea of maybe level-setting and having a sort of investment, public investment portfolio, 101, in a work session, which may not necessarily be provided, given by our investment management company, but by yet someone else who can just sort of talk about the public policy side of that, the auditor requirements and that sort of thing, that we might could level-set everyone. I think it's a great discussion to have, and then from there, then I would suggest you make decisions on whether you want to restructure your process or the way you might want to go about it, just so everyone's in that conversation at the same level, if you will, not in terms of knowledge, but in terms of background. So I would recommend you do that. I certainly appreciate and understand you want the maximum out of the taxpayer dollar that you can get. No ifs, ands, or buts. I mean, we would all want to see that within reason and without too much riskiness, obviously, because we've seen where that hasn't gone well in places, so. But let me take this back to staff. Let me kick this around with Matt, and I'll do a little benchmarking, too, with a couple of other cities and see how they do it as well, if that's okay. And then we'll report back to you on that. A great conversation. I appreciate the dialogue and certainly the interest in it, because it's where it needs to be. So, thank you.
Well, thanks. I think it would be helpful for us to understand, perhaps it is what you do all day, every day, isn't what all of us do. So if we had, you know, some background on what the possibilities are, and then we could identify how to capitalize on those, what those opportunities are to the greatest extent possible. So, okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Greg.
Just real quick, and I agree with Andy, having the oversight is a very, really valuable thing. But when I run this forward in my mind, if we had a committee, do we really, would we be able to find five people, let's say, in this community that would volunteer to come in and serve on this community? You know, and we wouldn't necessarily have the kind of fiduciary duty that we would have to us as if we hired them? And finding five people, I mean, we have a hard time finding an architect, but on P&amp;Z, you know? I mean, it's a very difficult thing to do. And to find the people to staff that committee and to have the kind of commitment and dedication and knowledge and tenacity, and then for them to be able to speak with a unified voice about something that our advisors are doing wrong, I think your oversight and your questions are really legitimate ones. I think I'd rather hire somebody, have their fiduciary duty to us, and require them to go do their job, as opposed to try to get people in our community to sort of volunteer. But that does, I do not mean to belittle the questions you're asking or your intention at all.
As I said, I think it is an option. The investment advisory committee is in the document. So somebody somewhere along the way thought that an investment advisory committee was a valid thing to pursue. Have times changed since then? I don't know. But the IPS would need to be changed.
It doesn't need to be changed. It only says that there may be, that we may establish an investment committee. It doesn't say we have to. It doesn't say we must.
I understand.
It's an option, so we don't have to change the policy.
But if you change it to a consultant, if you're hiring a consultant-
It doesn't preclude us from using a consultant, though.
Okay.
I'm just saying, we don't have to change the policy.
Anything else regarding that?
Just one other thing. You know, well, one, you know, I love the questions that are being brought forward. I think, in government especially, the citizens look at us to make sure that we are definitely making the best decisions possible and using the best advice that we could possibly have. So however we get there, I think that's a path that we need to take. And so having staff talk about that is important. One thing that I would ask about, and maybe when you have staff have this conversation, I kind of look at this as my household account. I have investments. I own real estate. I have other sources of income. I can see the big picture, and I understand where I'm going, right? For me, sometimes on council, I find that we do make land acquisitions, we do have investments, we have other sources of income, but I don't always see what all my investments look like in one big ball, and where the percentages of those come from, and where I would say to myself, you know, I need more land because the investments aren't doing so well. Or possibly, I need another brand-new source of income, like sustainability, that creates battery power that I can sell, things like that. I would like to see, when we bring in someone, to give me a picture of what city investments look like and are capable of doing in the future, so.
I think that's a great point of whoever comes in, we want to know what we, not what we can't do, but what's maybe a little outside of the box. What would these other options be? So Dana, I look forward to hearing what you all can put together of how to spend some good time. Okay, that's going to bring us to the Public Services Committee, Ms. Fox.
Let me get my notes here. We had, just give me a second while I get my notes. We had a couple of reports from Brian Ashford about the maintenance facilities and fleet management. And we also had a report concerning, and these were just sort of catch-up to kind of get us an idea of what's been going on. Brian had brought forward the fact that in the future, they're looking at more electric and hybrid vehicles, more sustainability and management. We also had a report concerning asset management of all the assets throughout the city, and there was quite a few discussions about that. I think most of it was informational, and I think you can catch most of it in the reports that have been put out for us.
Great, thank you. We'll stick with you for liaison reports, so this is our meeting that we get all of those. So you, Planning Commission?
I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. But Planning Commission, we've had quite a few applicants coming forward, and so we're going to have quite a busy session coming up. And I don't really have a big report tonight, so I'm going to pass on that. All right.
We do get those updates after every meeting of your council actions, so we'll keep, continue to monitor those. And Dublin Bridges?
They're just still doing good work.
And Washington Township?
Right. Washington Township has, I saw them at the police, at the suicide prevention. Things are going well. I know that Chief O'Connell has been working with the police department in looking at how they can bring suicide prevention and combine where they can in helping folks in that manner, so I think all is well there.
Great, thank you. We'll go to Vice Mayor DeRosa and Mr. Keeler for the 33 Corridor Group.
Great. I just wanted to make a quick report. I had the pleasure, along with the mayor and Councilwoman Fox, to go to the U.S. 33 Corridor Ribbon Cutting Ceremony last week. Lieutenant Governor was there and people from around the community, and it was just a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the progress of the work on what people have coined the most connected highway in America, and to officially launch the Beta District. So that was a very, very nice opportunity. As we reflected on it, it was very interesting, and Mayor Grooms gave some comments, Emma S. Grooms gave some comments, about just the level of commitment from businesses, from municipalities, from state agencies, from education, from residents, et cetera, working together and really a very unique collaboration. So I appreciate and thank everybody for their work. Staff has done tremendous lift, and Dublin has been an incredible partner in this work, and it was wonderful to get to celebrate that. There was also talk about, you know, coming back in 25 years, and we could only imagine what that's going to look like from that great work. So it was a wonderful opportunity. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Keeler, Logan Union Champagne County, nothing at this time. Mr. Reiter, Arts Council?
Yes, we have a rather impressive response for our latest Public Arts Commission. We've received, let's see, the call to artists for the next large-scale permanent exhibit at Red Tray View is now completed. So we have received 151 artist applications. Great interest. Fifteen are from Ohio. They have come from 33 different states to participate in Dublin's art programs. Very impressive. Our next step is, will be a jury, the jury selection committee will work on evaluating these applicants. They're currently in that process right now. The finalists will visit Dublin and will present their proposals to the community early in 2022. If all goes according to plan, the new public artworks should be installed and dedicated in the summer of 2023. So that's our next big commission, and what I got for you from the arts people.
Great. And they must be undertaking some planning, because I think all of us have received-
Right. It's another whole project.
Good. Well, we know they're busy over at the Arts Council. And the Veterans Committee?
The Veterans Committee, the city and the Veterans Committee is planning a big Veterans Day with over 1,000 students participating. That'll be November 11th, of course. They've completed the relocation of the Dublin World War II Grounds of Remembrance Memorial. We are working on the interactive displays at the Grounds of Remembrance and at the library. These will be audio stories telling our history and about our heroes, actually. So we've had some very interesting Dubliners. They actually parachuted into D-Day. They've recorded their adventures and misadventures and what happened to them in these kind of experiences. We have just some great, great heroes. We discussed the city entry markers for the Purple Hearts markers and where they might go, and Dana's working on that, and he's boiling that down. So that's about what we have, and you've already heard from Don and Reese across America. Thank you.
Great, thanks. And just a reminder that Veterans Day celebration will be on the 11th month, on the 11th day at the 11th hour.
Roger that.
Look forward to seeing everyone there. Okay, Mr. Peterson, Board of Education?
Nothing.
Thank you. I will update a little on Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. There is some river wetlands, stream corridor funds available, and I know that our city staff is looking at applications for those grants. Could be a great opportunity for us in the city to apply, maybe acquire some additional green space that would not come from our own budget. Okay, we will start roundtable. I'll start down here on my far right with Mr. Peterson, waves me off, says he's got nothing. How many more meetings did you think you told me earlier? Not that anyone, not that you're counting. You had stated earlier today how many more meetings you-
Five.
Five. Well, we'll look for hardy reports. Ms. Saludo?
Nothing.
Mr. Keeler? Ms. Fox? Vice Mayor DeRosa? No. I just want to run through a couple of things. On the 14th, I had the opportunity to visit some wonderful folks at Friendship Village, and they wanted to discuss Forever Dublin and wanted to bring that message back to you, that they had a tremendous amount of interest in that, and it was a great opportunity, and I thank them for that, for the invitation. On the 15th was the 33 Corridor Ribbon Cutting, and that really was a special time. I feel like that we were driving a stake in the ground of something that we would reference for years to come, and appreciate the opportunity given to me to share and participate in those festivities. Chief, wanted to thank you for your work in the suicide prevention that evening. to thank you for your work in the suicide prevention that evening, certainly a crisis across America in these days, and thank you for addressing that and working on those issues. On the 16th, I had the opportunity to participate in the Ohio Mayor's Alliance quarterly meeting. We had a tremendous amount of information given to us. Former Governor Taft was there, and he provided a great reference point for where he felt like we are in history right now. But we'll be coming to you, I think Dana and I will be coming to you in the near term, relative to broadband and municipal funding, follow-ups of the discussions that happened there. I want to thank my friends at Deer Run and Bailey Elementary for having me on the 22nd. I tell you, if, I wish on all of my bad days, I had the opportunity to spend some time with third graders, because they were just fantastic, and I could not have enjoyed them more. So I thank them for that opportunity. Also, on the 22nd, swore in two new communication texts for NREC, so that department is growing, and their staff is growing, and I had some wonderful folks that I had the opportunity to swear in. And then on the 24th, Jane and I went to a birthday party that was unprecedented for me. I went to Flowring's 105th birthday party. Jane stopped and got her a dozen yellow roses, the rose of friendship, and she certainly is a friend to all there at the Dublin Retirement Village, and certainly wish her a happy birthday, and thank her for the privilege of inviting us to attend with her, because she is sharp. She works out at the rec center in the pool twice a week. So, and what warmed my heart the most about it is, on her left arm was her daughter, and on her right arm was her son. And it was just really neat to see what, a testament to what a wonderful woman she was, because her family couldn't love her more than they do. And then last, I just want to remind us all that the Dublin City School, School Board meeting will be held in this room on the 28th. And so we certainly are looking forward to having them in this space, and looking forward to more members of the community having the opportunity to visit here. And they have some important conversations that they're going to have. And so thank you to all the council members, everyone, for the support in letting them use this setup on that evening. I think it will be a good space and beneficial to the community. With that, I have nothing else, and we will stand adjourned. Have a wonderful evening.